We're going to be precise today. Okay, it's six o'clock and we're going to call to order the Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-five regular session of the Carlton City Council. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure can. Counselor Terrell?
Here.
Counselor Thompson-Rizer?
There.
Counselor Erickson?
Here.
Counselor Hill?
Here.
Counselor Ward-Mullen?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Skipper?
Here.
Mayor Watkins?
Here.
All in attendance. Good to go.
Thank you. Please join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
There are none.
Do, thank you. Do we have any ceremonies, appointments, or announcements? It's a quiet night, huh? Okay, in that case, we are coming to the portion of our meeting that, let me move this down here, that relies on the citizens of our city. These are citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the City Council on any items off or on the current agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state your name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. We start this section with items not on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any comment? Yes, go for it.
Good evening, Council. John Doerner. One one two zero zero, Northeast Medoffrey Road. We not on? So I can see why you all have a problem with your minds. So let's all speak loudly tonight so everybody can hear. That'd be good. Once again, John Doerner, one one two zero zero, Northeast Medoffrey Road, just to the east side of town. And I have a question tonight for the council. And this has to do, how would anyone know if the applicant has appealed the X-Nay on his gas station? Has an appeal been made? Will it be posted on your website? I understand that, what is it, November seventh, he has until to post something, or to appeal to the L U B A. And so could somebody contact me, or could you all contact everybody? You have a huge mailing list. The people that are interested in this, and we all would like to know. So I'm speaking behalf of myself and a bunch of others. Thank you.
Thank you, John. At this time, we haven't heard anything. So, yeah, we would, we would definitely be letting folks know. Oh, well, I thought I was. I was trying. I said at this time, we've not heard anything from them. Uh huh. Okay, are there any other citizen comments? Okay. Items that are not on our agenda tonight, any comments from anybody? We'll move right along then to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented in the packet.
Aye, second.
Been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty. I'm, it seems like I haven't been here. This is like the first time in six months it feels like I've been here. I'm trying to figure out what's going on. Ordinances, resolutions, discussion, and action items. Starting with our guest tonight, who is Superintendent Clint Raver from the Carlton Public School District, Carlton-Yamhill Public School District. Oops, sorry.
Well, I will accept that, but officially it's the Yamhill Carlton, yeah. School District. Thank you. Thank you for inviting us back. Love coming and sharing the news of the district with the City Council. I do have my, my regular guest, my regular companion for these speaking engagements. So I'll let him go ahead and start. This is Lucas Parton, our Associate Student Body President for this year. Come on up, Lucas.
Welcome, Lucas.
All right. Hello, everyone. So I'm going to kind of start with updating everybody on our sports for the fall season. So fall season sports just ended, so now we're kind of moving into our winter sports. We have five fall sports. We have football, volleyball, boys and girls soccer, and cross country. And in addition, we also do leadership kind of sports that are brute volleyball and powder puff. Football this year, we didn't do too well. They just, they won their final game, though. I think that was on last Friday, so that was super good for them. Volleyball, they, they had a good season. I think they, actually, I think they had a winning season. I think they ended, they ended pretty high in their league. Boys and girls soccer made it to league playoffs. This, this year was awesome. Boys soccer made, it was the first time in fifteen years that they made league playoffs, so. Woo woo. I'm kind of biased towards that because I'm the captain as well. And Boys Cross Country also just made it to state last Wednesday, I believe. So go them. I'm also on the cross-country team, too.
And did you win any soccer awards, Lucas, you personally?
I might have won first-team All-League, which is the highest, one of the highest soccer awards you can get, so.
Congratulations.
Brute volleyball, the seniors won. Basically, that's kind of a competition that leadership holds, where we have the, the seniors, juniors, sophomores, and the freshmen compete in assemblies throughout the week, and then they get to play the staff at the end. It's a great way to bring the students together, and it's kind of interactive because students get to cheer for their teams and their classes and everything. Powder puff is also starting, so that's, the girls get to go play flag football in front of the entire school. I don't know when the game is, but that's another chance for the students to interact and go watch fun games with everybody. As for other events, we also just had homecoming. This year's homecoming, we had less people than last year. Unfortunately, the football game had a thirty-minute lightning delay, so that kind of delayed into the dance. But the theme this year was, we went with Night on the Bayou, which is a little bit different than, we kind of go with usually like some themes that we've done over and over again. And this year, we chose something a little bit out of our comfort zone. And everybody said they loved the theme. We had twinkling lights everywhere. There, we had other lights up on the walls. Somebody even spelled "Bayou" on the wall with lights, which was super cool. We also spent a lot less money this year. Last year, we paid for a DJ, and this year we decided to, we decided against that, and we were, everybody was still able to have a great time at the dance. As for a leadership class in general, we just came, I actually just got back from the O A S C conference yesterday, which is a big state leadership council conference where all the schools in the state come and join us, and they basically talk about different things that they're doing. We also teach a workshop at the conference, which is a great opportunity. We, last year, last spring, actually, we got gold, the Gold Leadership Council Award, which is the highest award that you can get at the state level. So that was a great opportunity for us to, for leadership to go out and network with other people. We're also starting our canned food drive, I believe, tomorrow. So people bring, I think it's our second period class. People bring in cans. Last year, I don't remember how many we had, but it was a lot. The competition got, got super competitive. People, I think one class brought in over like three hundred cans or something, which is a great way to support the community. And for the future, we're also going to be doing another leadership conference in December, I think. So, super excited for that. Awesome. Any questions for me?
Yeah, how can we, as counselors, contribute to your canned drive? Where can we drop off cans?
That's a great question. I think anytime, honestly. They have, they have the bins kind of in the hallway, so you can just come and drop them off. We're also, we also work with YCAP. We do a service project every year with them, where we actually go out and make meals. So you can also donate straight to YCAP, because that's who we work with directly.
Okay. Thank you.
Would it be possible to put something here? That's the ball? Barrel, bin, or something?
I'm not in charge, but I think that's a brilliant idea, just for the record.
Yes.
Can you arrange somebody, us?
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that.
That question was approached earlier today, and we have staff actually looking at what we can do here. So, and it makes things easier when we can piggyback.
Exactly. Yeah, that would be fantastic, especially guys driving, driving, so he can just pick it up on the road in school.
It's also kind of convenient because the school's right next to the food bank in Yamhill, so we usually take all of the bins straight there, and then they can go to the big distribution center in McNeville.
I just have one more question.
Yeah.
Are the classes competing for who brings in the most cans? So do we have to pick a favorite?
Yeah.
Okay, so are we giving you an advantage?
I mean, the seniors will take all they can get.
Put a sign out by the sidewalk, announce, showing that there'd be a food bank drop off?
We would do.
We've, we've talked about pushing the information out into the community so that we can get more community involvement. We might use various means of social media, and city has platforms that they can utilize for that.
Make a comment on donations to the food bank. Obviously, it's in the forefront of all of our minds right now.
Yeah.
So I went to Windfall last week and picked up several bags of groceries, tried to drop them off at our local one, but they were closed because it's Halloween, Friday night. They aren't open until tomorrow, even if gone one morning. So I ended up taking it to the blockout in McNeville on Monday. So if we did have an alternative to somebody here in Carlton, where we can drop things out, it'd be wonderful.
Yeah, that'd be a great way to combine with them. I know they're always looking for people to work with on those types of things.
Further on that, with respect to our food bank here, is there a way that some of these cans that are being dropped off can be distributed to this food bank here in Carlton? Or is it all just going to Yamhill?
Well, so, so this particular drive is through the school district is a partnership with YCAP, so we're not going to, you know, be able to kind of.
Well, it's going to YCAP. So, okay, never mind, never mind. Thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's, we'll get where it needs to go, for sure.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lucas. Yeah, yeah. And, and this was on my list for later on, but the intermediate school is also doing a food drive, so feel free if, if, if you don't have a location here, if something's closed, you can drop that off at the intermediate school during school hours. That doesn't help their competition, but that's okay. Or you can take it up to the high school office during school hours, and they'll be happy to take those donations, so. So, great start to the year. We have two new administrators in the district. Morgan Bishop is the new principal at Yamhill Carlton Elementary School. Morgan's been with the district for, I think this is year five. She was a reading specialist, a classroom teacher and a reading specialist. Last year, when Amanda Dallas was split between the elementary school and the intermediate school, Morgan was the teacher in charge at the elementary school on those times that Amanda wasn't there and did a fantastic job. So it was a natural fit to move her into the principal job, and the staff may have cheered and hugged me and other things when I announced that Morgan was there. So that made me feel like that was a good decision, and it has been. She's done a great job. At the high school, we have a new assistant principal athletic director, Richard Cedar. Richard brings years of experience. It's his first time as an athletic director, so there's a learning curve in that position, but he is doing a fantastic job and just really jumping in with both feet and has been a great support at the high school and very, very excited to have him. This is in a, an administrator position, but we hired a new business manager. Our business manager that we had for eight years, Tammy Ziegler, resigned in June or early July, and business managers in public education are unicorns right now to find one. It is really, really hard to find a business manager. It's hard to find somebody with experience. A lot of districts are hiring people from the private sector, and public school finances are not the same as small business or even large corporate finances. It's a very, very different environment. So, but we got so lucky. I just happened to get a call from somebody that I've worked with and said, I know a person that's looking to relocate back to the valley. So we hired Melanie Nies, who had eighteen years of school finance experience, including being a business manager, and she has been fantastic. So we've got a great administrative team, a great leadership team, and I would say in my seven years now in the district, this is the best leadership team that we've had assembled at one time. So really, really excited about where we're going. We continue to work on health and safety upgrades around the district, continue to improve safety infrastructure, including safety fencing upgrades. We've done some upgrading to the intermediate school fencing. We've put security lock boxes now at each of our buildings so that our first responders need to respond to some event. They've got the code to the lockbox, and in that box, they have keys and maps and, and fobs, all the, all the buildings. So just making sure that we have all the systems in place that we need to, to help our first responders in the unfortunate event that we need them for something. Along with that, yesterday, Morgan, being a new principal at the elementary school, asked for some support in, you know, what do I do around emergency management when, if something were to come up? So Carlton Police and Fire and myself met with Morgan yesterday, and we went through some different scenarios and how we respond and how the city responds. So really thankful to both the fire chief and the police chief for their time yesterday and their support staff that came and walked us through those scenarios. And, and just really great to do that once in a while. Our next step is that we're going to do what we call a tabletop exercise. Get more players at the table, get our bus company, get state police, get county police, county first response, YCOM, and sit down, and we say, okay, here's a scenario. And now we walk through every step of the way. What do we do if this event happens? So just that we know that we're keeping our tool sharp in the, hopefully unlikely event that we ever have to actually implement it. One of the things we've also implemented around school safety is an app called Safer Watch. So it's an internal communication system in the event that there is some sort of critical response that needs to take place in the district. So this could be every, anything from somebody fell down on the playground to there's some sort of active assailant on campus. And so staff members download this app. We can activate it and say everything from, we need administrator help. So on, say, on the playground, and the, and the staff member pushes the button, and the administrator receives a notification on their phone, in their email, in a text message that says, Mrs. Jones needs help on the playground. And then they'll go and respond to that. All the way to, there's a fire in the building, they can press the fire button, it automatically calls YCOM and alerts them, so they immediately respond. It's the fastest way to get word out that there's some kind of emergency. We follow that up with a phone call and say, hey, there's a fire at the elementary school. It's in, it's in the gym. Medical event, the same thing. If, if it's a critical medical event, say, a heart attack, we can push the medical button. We also call nine one one, say, hey, we have a medical event. Active assailant, same deal. We push the button, automatically calls YCOM. They respond while the school manages what's taking place in the, in the building. So we've had to use it a couple times, not for major things. A student had a medical issue, so we go into what's called a hold. So we don't want a lot of kids in the hallways. If a student's having a medical issue, we want to give them privacy. So we push the hold button. It notifies all the staff that we're in a hold. They lock their doors. They keep their kids in the hallway to give that student privacy while we deal with the medical issue. So. Continue to work on H-Track system repairs. We've had some issues over the summer with heating and cooling, especially at the elementary school. We're, we're working on those units. We think we have those all fixed before the real cold weather sets in, so that the kids will be warm, and we don't have to send them with blankets and jackets to school. But those are continuing issues that we, that we work on. Just as a reminder, you know, when we talk about things like capital improvements for the district, we, I had talked about this in June. The state doesn't, Washington, some other states around us, the state actually allocates funding to schools for capital projects. In Oregon, we don't get a special pot of money for capital projects. So we get our general fund, and from that, we take a portion of that and allocate it to routine maintenance or, or smaller projects. Everything from painting to changing filters, that sort of thing. But when we have really major things come up that could cost hundreds of thousand dollars, we don't necessarily have those in reserves to do that. So just keep that in mind when we, when, if you come into our buildings and you see that we're having issues around our buildings, it's not that we don't want to fix them, it's that we may not have the reserves right now to address it. So. Enrollment continues to be a little bit of a concern. We're down approximately nine students from last year at this time. We do project an uptick coming in the next couple of years, but again, we're, we're funded based on the number of students enrolled in school. So, you know, I always say there's a little dollar sign over one, every one of those kids had. And so when, when we lose enrollment, we do lose state funding, but we're hoping to see that it ticks up. We're, we're down nine from this time last year. Nine. Yeah. Which doesn't sound like a lot, but that's roughly ninety thousand dollars, and that's roughly the cost of the future. So, a little less. With that in mind, there are significant concerns starting to arise with education funding in Oregon. It's one of the few states, and I, and I want to say five, but don't quote me on that, that the state revenue formula is tied to the federal revenue formula. So when the federal government reduces your taxable income through credits or, or other things, it also reduces the taxable income in Oregon. So when there's less taxes on the federal level, there's less taxes at the state level, which reduces revenues for us. So before the tax cuts at the federal level, we, the state thought we were going to have a surplus. We now found it, find ourselves in a deficit. So, of course, that trickles down to all programs, including education. They're telling us right now that mid-biennium cuts. So we're on the first half of a biennium. That mid-biennium cuts are unlikely for education, but there could be some significant cuts coming in the next biennium in twenty-seven. So we're starting to make some contingency plans just in case. But as we move forward, there could be some lean days coming for public education, and we're not going to be immune to that. So. Let's see. So some good news. Fall, we talked about fall sports and winter sports. We, our FFA team, Future Farmers of America egg sales team, went to the national convention last week, and they won first place, national champions in egg sales. The marketing team also went to the national championship and placed third. Coming up, we have our annual VIP lunch days coming to the schools. So these are days where students can invite family members, friends, neighbors, aunts, uncles, to come have lunch with them for the day and with a holiday theme. So think turkey and gravy and mashed potatoes for those days, and we have those coming up this month. Mentioned the intermediate school is also holding a canned food drive, and that goes on till the twentieth. And, excuse me, Ms. McLean, a teacher at Yamhill Carlton Elementary School, was awarded Classroom of the Month by Fox Twelve and Oregon's Freemasons. They gifted her with a thousand dollars to spend on classroom supplies and needs. So that was, they did a news story on her. You can find it online. One of the things I would recommend to you, if you don't follow the school district or the individual schools on Facebook, that's where most of our outward communication goes to the community. If you're not a Facebook user, I understand. Even if you just get Facebook and don't follow anybody else, but follow the school district, you'll be able to see all the events and activities and the good news that takes place. We have a really strong social media presence through Facebook. So, okay. Any questions? Okay.
All right.
See, for your Facebook page, it's just Y C on the Facebook.
So each of the schools has a page. So if you search on Facebook for Yamhill Carlton Elementary School, Yamhill Carlton Intermediate, Yamhill Carlton High School, you'll find their pages. And then ours is under Yamhill Carlton School District. Yep. If you need help with that, let me know.
Just some quick feedback. If you're a new vice principal up at the high school, one of the kids that goes up there says that it's much more orderly.
That's good to hear.
Yes.
We like orderly.
Well, then the behavior has come up.
Good, good. Okay, with that, I'm going to step out. My son's twenty-first birthday is today, so we're going to go have dinner with him. But thank you so much for this opportunity, and I, I hope to be invited back later in the year and to share more news.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Alrighty. Alrighty, moving along here. Item B. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven five four, Carlton TSP Comp Plan, second reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Amerson.
The TSP, this is it. Second reading. So you're in your memo on your packet, page eighteen, has the recommendation in memo, excuse me, in move forms, if you so choose to read. But it is the same as the first reading. Documents have not been changed. So this would complete the TSP, and then we would have a thirty-day wait period before codification, and it's part of our code.
Alrighty, so we just need a motion to approve it? Or read it?
There's a motion to authorize the, the reading of the ordinance first.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that the City Council authorize the reading of Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven five four, amending the Carlton Comprehensive Plan in part and by title only.
Second.
Been moved and seconded?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven five four, and ordinance amending the Carlton Comprehensive Plan in part and adopting the amended comprehensive plan.
Where do we go from there?
Right now, we do the roll call vote.
Yes, you would entertain a motion to accept the second reading of the ordinance, amending the transportation chapter, and that would be a roll call vote after it is moved and seconded.
All right. So I move that the City Council accept the second reading of the Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven five four, amending the transportation chapter of the Carlton Comprehensive Plan.
A second.
And now it's roll call.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote?
Counselor Terrell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson-Rizer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Erickson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Hill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Ward-Mullen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Skipper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Watkins, your vote?
Yes.
All in favor, motion passes.
Alrighty. So then we move along here.
Mayor, with, with your permission, I.
Mayor, with, with your permission, I just have a point of information I would like to clarify regarding what we just passed. Can I just ask a quick question about when that will be posted in the, on the website?
Well, you just asked the question, so.
So is it gonna be immediately put on the books or will it wait thirty days before it's immediate, before it's posted?
The development code will be thirty days, the comp plan will also be thirty, so they will be go up at the same time.
Okay, so it'll be thirty days, then all those will be posted.
I, I will preface that with our codification company did take six months to upload the development code. To get it all codified, that was quite the thick document, um, this one is not near as big, but they might take more than after the thirty days, so just. There, they'll be working on it, but I'm happy to give you updates.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Okay, so we are moving down to item C. All righty, item C, which is. Oh, yeah, I'm just not with the program design.
This is ordinance, uh, twenty twenty five seven five five, and this is the development code portion of the T S P adoption process. And I will hand it over to Ms. Emerson.
Not much more to add, you just passed the comprehensive plan, which is the master plans. And this is development code, is what we will use daily, um, page twenty six of your packet has the. Following motions, it follows the same pattern as the previous.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I move that council authorize the reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash seven five five. Amending the Carlton Development Code Title Seventeen in part and adopting the amended development code language by title only.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash seven five five and ordinance amending the Carlton Development Code Title Seventeen of the Municipal Code in part. And adopting the amended development code language.
It is moved that the city council accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash seven five five. Amending the Carlton Development Code Title Seventeen in part.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call vote.
Think we need a second.
Second.
Oh. Second.
One of you, that's fine, uh, roll call.
Counselor Terrell, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Thompson Reiser, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Erickson?
Yes.
Counselor Hill, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Ward Mullen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Skipper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Watkins, how do you vote?
Yes.
All in favor, motion passes.
All righty, moving on to item D. Code amendment discussion due to state legislative actions.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Council, I'm gonna turn this over to Scott White, who is with us remotely tonight.
Uh, greetings, members of the council, uh, Scott White. I am, uh, just remotely here to tell you that it was a very active state legislative session. For twenty twenty five and was, uh, just shy of four thousand bills that were introduced. And with that, uh, came a lot of land use, uh, bills, uh, most, uh, related to housing production. And we thought it would best to, uh, provide you what, uh, the Department of Land Conservation. And Development, D L C D, what they produce, uh, generally when there's a long session and there's been lots of land use bills. Uh, we, um, uh, provided as part of your packet tonight, uh, it's pages one fifty nine through, uh, one seventy six. And, uh, I'm not, uh, here to, um, recommend that the council. Uh, initiate, uh, any development code amendments at this time, there is a lot of rulemaking. That has started and will continue into twenty twenty six, and we are watching that quite carefully. Uh, and, uh, what we'll do is probably come back sometime in twenty twenty six. And suggest some code updates, um, hopefully they'll be minor and there's certain definitions, uh, mostly related to middle housing. Uh, that have, um, been adjusted through, through some bills and, uh, uh, some procedural, uh, laws that have changed. Um, so, uh, you have the, the packet that, uh, was produced by D L C D. And, uh, some of these bills, of course, do not apply to Carlton. Uh, some are based on location and, uh, apply to cities of a larger size. Uh, so, again, it's, uh, uh, nothing recommended for, for action by staff, uh, this evening, but we just wanted to. Uh, um, make sure you're made aware of, of what changes are underway at the state level and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I, I do. Okay, go ahead. Um, Scott, could you tell me, when you say minor, um, code changes, um, we just finished our comprehensive plan update, so what do you mean by minor?
So, there, I, I do see certain definitions, uh, the governor's bill. That, uh, was introduced, this is, um, House Bill, uh, twenty one thirty eight. Uh, that, um, had, uh, some newer, uh, definitions, uh. Refinement of existing definitions for duplex and cottage clusters and, uh, various items that, yes, we had introduced for. Um, uh, statute and rule compliance, um, so that was only what, in June of, of, of last year. Where we went through the code significantly to, to update things, um, and all of a sudden, there's, uh, some, some changes here. Uh, also procedurally, there's, uh, some, uh, I think the council's aware of. What we're required to, to do, uh, under law with respect to processing development applications in the hundred and twenty days, uh. There's a shorter period if that, uh, if the housing project is affordable. Uh, there's also a new, um, clocks that are applied to, um, things that go beyond the, the, the land use process too, we have, uh. Um, a forty five day shot clock on engineering review that would normally come. Uh, so there'd be the plans, the, uh, detailed construction drawings that the city receives after land use approval. So, um, there's a, there's a lot of things, uh, that, um, that we're gonna have to take a look at and, and. Make sure that, uh, Carlton's code is, uh, is consistent, um, I can go into some more things, I, I don't want to speculate too much on what. It will entail because the rulemaking will refine it and that's what, uh. Uh, uh, the, what the Land Conservation Development, uh, Commission is, is, uh, scheduled to have some hearings, uh, soon in the beginning of the year.
Thank you, Scott, are there any other questions?
Aye.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I can imagine that that's, there's a lot, lot in that to deal with and something that we're gonna have to spend some time with, um, just. Professionally knowing that that middle housing, the new ORSs and things like that is pretty, pretty cumbersome to get through, so, it'll be interesting.
All righty, no other questions, comments? Moving along. We're down to DL, yeah, D L C D Housing Planning Assistance Grant Update.
We did not receive it, um, so that's, it's a quick one on, on that.
Sorry, Scott.
Oh.
Are you, oh, okay.
Well, I'm just answering that we did not, uh, receive the grant, um, a lot of competition for housing capacity analysis. Uh, there's a new methodology that state adopted for that purpose and, uh. Carlton, um, last conducted housing needs analysis, I think I provided a, oh, a PowerPoint presentation to the council about this and. Um, uh, Carlton will be due for, uh, conducting housing. Needs analysis, capacity analysis, and in another couple of years, it only lasts for, uh, for twenty years and. So we're kind of at year eighteen, uh, or at least, uh, what was it, two thousand and seven? When, uh, the city last conducted, uh, uh, housing capacity analysis and, and, uh, uh, well, available inventory. Um, so anyways, uh, we'll look for other opportunities that come along for grant funding and, uh. Keep an eye out and, uh, tell the council, if we see those, we'll come back and say, hey, we'll, we'd like to apply for this grant.
Thank you.
I have a question. Scott, not specifically about the grant, but just more, uh, generally speaking with respect to the D L C D. Um, are, in terms of middle housing or planning for housing going forward, are they? I seem to have read that there's more of a focus to be a bit more, for a lack of a better word, liberal about, um. Allowable housing in areas that might have been considered sensitive in the past in terms of land area. Mike, is that true or not true?
Well, um, there, I mean, you mean sensitive in, with respect to environmental, uh, areas?
Exactly.
Con- constrained areas, that's still alive, uh, what, uh, may have read is, um. Some areas that, uh, when you enlarge the U G B, you're required to go through. Uh, quite a bit of environmental review and determine where the wetlands are and other sensitive areas in this area that will become the city in the future. Carlton, uh, does not have, uh, an area of, um. Uh, doesn't have a, a U G, the U G B and the, um, city boundary are one and the same. So I don't see that specific to Carlton, but there are s- uh, some cities that have. Uh, undergone the, the U G B expansion process and have run into some difficulties in getting this. That these lands, uh, incorporated and ready for, uh, for development potential. Uh, mainly because there hasn't been, uh, this, um, environmental review, uh, you know, delineation of wetlands and things like that, so. So there is some new legislation that would, one, would offer some money, there's a grants that are available for doing delineations. Uh, and to speed that up as well, so that I, that might be what, uh, you read, and I'm not, not sure, but, um. Yeah.
I mean, it's just kind of, uh, I think it really, what I was hearing, it came more from. Uh, regarding the governor's office and in the priority for increasing housing generally in Oregon. And that there, that the emphasis might be a bit more permissible in the state to be able to build the inventory of housing. Something along those lines.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, and there's, there was also, when, when we went through the code update, uh, council has heard me probably say that there was. Uh, clear and objective standards, uh, we got rid of a lot of discretionary standards, that was something that was mandated by the state and earlier. Uh, sessions and, and, uh, what we think is, and this is where the rulemaking comes in, uh, there was a bill that, that allowed. Uh, like a ten percent variance to clear an objective standards and so sort of like, well, wait a minute, that sort of defeats the purpose there, but. Uh, that, that may also be that, that flexibility that you heard about is that, uh. Uh, some of the, um, standards we may have as part of the staff report say that, well, the applicant also qualifies for a ten percent reduction due to. Some kind of state statute or rule.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Are there any other questions? All righty. Moving along, um, where was I, I lost my place here, okay, item F, special meet, meeting date setting?
Yes, uh, Mayor, Mayor and Council, uh, this is a memo that I drafted so that you had time to consult your calendars. There are three dates in front of you, uh, the eighth, ninth, and eleventh of December. These are under consideration if an appeal is filed. Um, if the appeal is not filed, the state, that would be a placeholder, would be canceled. Um, but I wanted to give you an opportunity to be able to consult your calendars and then we can choose a date that works the best for everyone. So I was gonna ask, which one of those dates works for you?
All three. All three work for me so far. I'm, I'm flexible for all three.
Okay. You're good?
Yeah, I'm good as well, I think, I don't know if it makes sense to just keep a Tuesday. As our typical meetings are for December ninth, or if it works easier on staff to have it on the Monday or the Thursday, it doesn't, I'm flexible as well.
Mayor, do you have any conflicts? And I think, December ninth, is that the Tuesday?
Can I, with your permission, Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure, yes.
Um, does that mean we roll that possible appeal into a regular meeting? Or would that be an absolutely separate meeting?
Be an absolute separate meeting to special meeting, your regular meeting for the month of December would be the second.
Okay, thank you.
Could we be starting at five to six and then six to whatever for regular meeting?
A regular meeting, or for the December second meeting, you'll start at six P M. And you would also start the special meeting, if there, it is needed at six P M.
If we do it on just any of the eighth, ninth, or tenth, or eighth, ninth, and eleventh, we'd start at six.
Uh, any one of those, yes. And I think we're talking about tentatively holding the ninth as the placeholder.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Do we need a motion to make this happen?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, item G, resolution twenty twenty five dash three seven three budget adjustment for transfers and appropriations.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council, I'm gonna hand this over to Assistant City Manager Martinez.
Thank you, first of all, I want to apologize for the enormous amount of pages, but with these grants, they're all awarded separately, so each. Grant has its own set of paperwork, which is why it took up a majority of the packet. Um, this grant, we were lucky enough to get again this year, it would increase, um, the overtime budget. And be coded as grant time by twenty one thousand and it's offset by receiving the grant funds, so every time they work, we send it off to the state. They reimburse us the monies back, so it's a net zero balance for the, um, the department. The one good benefit for this is if we have an officer on vacation, we can have them, uh, fill in with grant time that doesn't cost the city, so it's. Uh, really beneficial, it, it works heavily on crosswalks, the distracted driving, which is cell phones, Dewey. Um, and, uh, seat belts and then speed enforcement, so, um, and when they're out there, they're specifically on grant time. Hours.
Any questions?
Can I make a, just a point of order as we move forward?
Okay.
Just, um, to follow Robert's, Robert's rules of orders, if, if a motion is presented and seconded, can we ask for discussion at that time?
Oh, yep.
So, so we're not jumping into ayes and nays and, and stuff, so we can appropriately ask the questions at the right time.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All righty. In that case. What do we need to be doing here? A motion.
So I move that the city council adopt resolution, resolution twenty twenty five dash three seven three approving the F Y twenty five budget transfers. And appropriation adjustments as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? Aye.
Aye.
Point of order, that's kind of what I was just mentioning, so after a motion's on the table, moved and seconded, that's when discussion opens up.
Okay, sorry.
Is there any discussion?
Um, I, I actually have one question, so when we get these grants, does that money go into our L G I P fund? And then get transferred from our L G I P fund, or where does that money go?
So the money isn't awarded upfront, they work the hours, we submit the hours, they resubmit a check and it'll go straight in. into grants in general fund. It does not go into LGIP. We don't have it at the beginning.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
A quick question. So just, so I'm probably reading incorrectly. There's one grant award of 21,000, or is there, is there two?
There's five.
There's five, okay. I guess I was just looking at page page 184 of the packet, and I see the changes of two figures of 21,000.
Yeah, that's the total of them. They all go, it changes the appropriation for the grant revenue by 21,000, and it changes the overtime by 21,000, but it's a total of the five grants.
So the total is 42,000?
No, 21. That's, that's it, that's a, you have to put the debit and the credit to balance out and to negate it.
That makes sense, thanks.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
How much does $21,000 buy us for man-hours on the street patrolling? And that may be, that, and if if this is something that we need to answer later, but I'm, I'm just kind of curious, how much do we get for?
It does provide us some time, specifically for extra coverage, but it's not an immense amount when it comes down to the end, but it's highly beneficial to the city. As far as breakdown of hours, I'd have to go, it's in an overtime component, and I have to break that down to give you an exact, so I can follow up if you'd like. Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, have a question?
Yes.
So I know we have our normal route of pushing out communications to the community. I'm wondering, in this instance with these grants, and specifically the grant that we received for the, for $9,000, I believe, that was going to be used for that equipment for detecting drugs in a safer manner. If we're gonna do sort of more communication, not just the normal communication. I mean, I just think that that information should really be headlined out there to the community in a more special way, I think. However you see fit.
Might also work as a deterrent to help people use better thought processes, so.
It is surprising.
Better thought processes like that. Alrighty, are there any other discussion questions, comments? Yes.
Just highly in favor of where instead of the at the end, it's net zero on on the city. So I like that.
What does everybody else? Alrighty.
So where are? You had a motion and a second, you had discussion, and now a vote would be appropriate.
Are voting? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. I am just not, okay. Resolution. Item H, CIS Public Safety Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I'm actually gonna introduce Senior Officer Jordan to talk about this grant that was received for the NARC Ranger.
Is working? There you go, sounds like it. Thank you, everyone, for having me. I'm gonna spend just a little bit of time. I, I think a lot has been said on the grants that we've received for the public safety, specifically the traffic component. I just wanted to speak super briefly to that, what a asset that is to the department and to the city overall. Because it does a wonderful job filling in the holes when officers go on vacation, call out for sick leave, or are out on a training detail that's mandatory. That grant obviously allows other officers to work overtime, keep us in the city, and it maximizes our coverage in the city. So I just wanted to touch on that real quick. The, the case in point with the the CIS grant, that's for our insurance provider. I believe it was for $5,000 unless there's another figure out there, but it was to allocate funds for us to purchase a drug detection kit. I'm gonna have a little show and tell, so hopefully that's entertaining. But so originally, what most agencies that don't have something like this would have is called a NIC test kit. Stands for Narcotics Identification Test Kit, I think. And I can come closer if y'all would like to kind of see, because it's pretty small. But essentially, there's a bunch of different designations for the NIC test kits for different drugs. You can see they're extremely small. Inside is three little vials, some of them have two. And what an officer would have to do with suspected drugs is to get the drugs out of the container that they're in. And this is the handy dandy thing that they give you. It's a little piece of paper that's rounded on one end. And so with this roadside at the back of your trunk, generally with the wind blowing and the rain coming down, you'd have to fish the drugs out of whatever they're in. Open up this plastic pouch. Stick this inside, seal it all up, and then you have to crack the vials one by one. But sometimes you hit two, and then you gotta start over. So you try to hit one by one, shake it, let it sit for 30 seconds, crack the second, shake it. Let it sit for 30 seconds, crack the third, and you get the idea. And the idea is if it's, this one's for methamphetamine, if it's methamphetamine, it'll turn blue. Half the time it turns like, not blue, it's like purple or somewhere in between, and you're not quite sure what it is. So it can lead to confusion, but at the end of the day, this is to show whether a drug is what we call presumptive positive for whatever you're testing. So in this case, methamphetamine. The, the major concern, especially nowadays with fentanyl and all of its forms hitting the streets, is the practice of trying to get drugs out of what they're in, which is super dangerous, especially if it's fentanyl. Trying to get it into something like this, that's, there's been case after case of, of law enforcement personnel overdosing very quickly on fentanyl and other similar drugs. So we have the NARC Ranger, which is, you could tell it's much bigger. And what this does, I'll open it up and I can kind of come closer so you can see, but there's essentially a laptop inside with another screen on the lid, and then there's a sensor. And its purpose is essentially, we can keep whatever we found the drugs in as long as it's fairly transparent, which most times it is, it's plastic baggies or glass tubes, pipes, things like that. We can actually just set the item on top of the sensor, hit a couple of buttons, and the, the sensor actually reads through the material and tells you what's inside. If there's any question, like it doesn't get a good read, or it thinks it's a couple of different things, it'll actually send it to the NARC Rangers headquarters, and they have professionals look at all of the math and science behind what it's reading and write you back in a pretty timely manner what it's, again, presumptive positive to be. So I can pop this open and that's what it looks like inside. There's a little laser eye right here.
So what the accuracy of this?
Just as accurate as a NIC test. So again, it's presumptive positive, so what we had to do in the past, and we still have to do with this, is we have to send it to the lab, and they do an actual chemical analysis on whatever it is to get a confirmed identification of the drug. But for making an arrest or for officer safety purposes, this is, will give a presumptive positive.
I'm sorry, where do you actually put the presumptive drug to test it?
You, you just stick it right here.
So I mean, but you're handling it, how are you handling?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll still handle it with gloves like we always do, but say it's a, it's a little plastic baggie. Before, we'd have to open up the plastic baggy and scoop the drugs out. This, we could just take the whole baggie, put it right on top of the little laser eye, close this up, and run it, and it'll tell us what it is.
Okay.
So we don't have any more with opening up the packaging, trying to fish everything into a little NIC test, so. Yeah.
This is reusable, your little NIC tests or whatever those things are, are not.
That's correct, yeah. So this, it's, it's a standard laptop, so we just charge it when it needs to be charged. The NIC test kits, obviously, when you test it, you take a picture of it and you throw the whole thing away. So, which leads to reoccurring costs, and then they do expire, so if you don't use them fast enough, and they expire, and you gotta reorder them. Or a lot of times you're out of certain, because there's so many different branches, that you have to order a bunch of different kits that test different things. So yeah, there, it's, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'd say at least 30 or 40 different designated test kits, to where this will just read everything. Yep. It'll even pick up like acetaminophen and things like that, like it'll, it'll tell you. So, oh, that's just Tylenol. Yeah.
How often do you use those? Like a month? How many times would you need to use that a month?
Uh, depends on the month, but at, at least probably a good handful, especially with these. Again, we could go months without ever using a NIC kit test, test something, and then other times, sometimes per case, we could be using 10, 20, or 30, just because we have so many things that we found, whether it was in the course of a traffic stop or a search of a house. There might be so many items, we gotta test each one to determine if it's drugs or if it's, you know, flour or whatever, so. It, it just varies.
Question maybe for Chris, he'd be, what's the the disposal fees? Because I'm sure he says he throws it away. Well, fentanyl, you're not just throwing it in the garbage, it's gotta be. Isn't there a special disposal of the kits?
For the, for the NIC kit test?
Disposals in somewhere, not just in the city dump, they're going to a special place, aren't they?
Well, it depends on what it is. Usually they'll be packaged as biohazard, but a lot of the kits will actually inert the drug in it, so it's like the, I think you can buy kits online, where if you have like prescription narcotics, it makes whatever drug is in, in there inert. But if it, depending on what it is, it could be packaged as, as like a biohazard, so. Just depends. Or a special hazard, I, I would probably rather say.
Are there any other?
Yeah, are we gonna get another reason to have one in each vehicle?
So right now, just with what the grant allows, we just have the one, because it's my understanding they're, they're fairly expensive. But just the one with us, obviously, we always have one person on duty, and they'll carry it in their patrol car. If there's multiple officers on duty, as long as we have one, obviously, if we get a call where there's suspected drugs, we'll at least have the one and we can, we can test, so, yeah.
Anybody else?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Very, very.
My apologies for jumping the gun on the bringing that, sorry.
Alrighty. Item I, Council Liaison and City Manager Update. I'm gonna let you go first.
Thank you, Mayor. And as we go through these updates, if I could just remind the council to turn on their microphone when they are speaking, please. So Mayor Watkins, you're first up on the list, of course. League of Oregon City, Oregon Mayors Association, Yamhill County Mayors, All Hands, Mid Willamette Valley Advisory Transportation Committee, Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. Any updates from those?
Trying to think right now, what's, what we've got going on. I, we just I just went through a meeting with the CAG. What were we doing there? You weren't at that meeting, Tyler, what happened?
We had a board meeting in September, I think that was the last meeting that.
That you made it to?
Yeah.
Ah, okay, because you'd been at a couple of those. CAG is, right now, they're kind of re I guess, working, kind of re, reorganizing a little bit because they have we did lose the the current director, I guess he was a director? Yes, and so the city, that, that association is working on finding a new director, but it's gonna take some time to get that done. So in the meantime, they've got several staff people that are filling in the blanks. The thing with CAG is, of course, that we rely on them a lot for various and assorted programs and information, so having that, having that in place is, is gonna take some time. Let's see, so that was CAG. Right now, we've got what have we got coming up? We've got a, I think every organization, every county organization in the, in the county is planning something for the next, in the next three weeks. It's like we're doing a bunch of events. We've got what have we got? Shirley, you guys are going to the where are you going? Were you going, or did you, you just have one? You don't remember one, okay. I apologize, folks. I have not had a good day today, so I'm just kind of trying to hold it together a little bit more. I'm trying to think of what, because we just did the CAG meeting yesterday, and that was the main one that I was working on. So I'm gonna stop right now before I make a total fool of myself.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President Skipper, any updates on tourism on CBA?
Yeah, I, I think there's some exciting things happening in the Tourism Committee and CBA. There's a lot of discussion going on about the the rebranded website and things like that, so I think everybody, that's been a long awaited thing, so had some joint meetings with Coal Vita and, and the Tourism Committee, and I thought they went pretty well, and good staff feedback, so those things are moving forward. CBA, I think I was not able to attend the last meeting, but I think the feedback was that the Carlton Crush Festival and everything went pretty successfully. There's some back and forth right now about with the holidays coming up and what the CBA is looking to do, what the city's looking to do, so kind of stay tuned for some activity with that. Hopefully, we'll have some things going on with the the bike parade and things like that, that have happened in the past. Unfortunately, no reindeer this year. That was one of the things that was updated, but yeah, all in all, I think those meetings are going well, and you know, we're kind of getting into the, the shoulder season. I don't know, I learned a lot of terms in this, these meetings that I've never heard of in my life. But you know, the slower season for tourism and the businesses, so I think any support and outreach we can do for them is, is good for the community, so, yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Erickson, is there any update on the rail corridor?
Actually, tomorrow morning, there'll be a meeting with a city staff, myself, Shirley, you're gonna be there? Okay, yeah, and one of the county commissioners to discuss further engagement with the city and the county. And then where we can move forward about doing some cleanup days, get that possibly started again soon. But that's all we have at this point in time.
Thank you. Councilor Thompson-Rizer and Councilor Ward-Mullins liaison assignments have completed with fun days over for the year. I'm sure planning will start soon in the new year and the transportation system plan being completed. Councilor Hill, do you want to update us on a meeting you had with city staff today?
Yes, I had a meeting with the city staff today.
Yes, I had a meeting with the city staff today. Uh with the with the stuff that's happening in uh at Capitol Hill federally and the budget uh issues that have happened. I I had a couple of questions, how we handle uh I guess you would say a household uh financial emergency here at uh the city of Carlton. And I found out that we have processes that are in place for if somebody's having problems. Um, basically, the big thing is, number one, come down, talk to our city staff. That's that's the easy that 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 way city staff can work with you to mitigate what's going on. Um. We have a very good policy of um, after the second payment, then a shut off notice goes out. Um, at that point in time, you know, that would be, you want to come in before if you're having a family uh financial emergency. Um. They'll work with you. They're flexible. Um, you could end up with a monthly plan to help get you out. Um, and there's also something that we have is that we have a uh community funded, a civilian funded um emergency fund. But what this requires is for people to put into it. Right now we have about a hundred bucks and a hundred bucks pays about half a bill, maybe a little less, depending on your household. Um, half a bill for a month. Um. Something that I'm gonna be doing is I'm going to be uh getting out into the uh out into the uh public out here and using some of my uh, some of my uh um fundraising uh capabilities and seeing if we can't get people to put, we'll match. You know, if we can find some big donors that would like to say, hey, we'll match a thousand bucks if somebody if we can get a thousand bucks donated between now and a set amount of time, um, get some big donors to uh do some match donations and that could really help balloon our emergency fund. Um. Couple of little side things off to the side of this. Uh, I believe that we talked about uh um putting some boxes in our lobby and piggybacking with other people who are already uh doing things such as food donations and toy drives. Um, and the reason why we want to piggyback is we want to um limit the amount of time that we take away from our staff, but maximize how much gets returned into our community. Uh, these are great ideas. And I also had some other questions like, hey, what do we do for people who are actually in need? And the biggest response and the best response that I've seen so far is dialing two one one. And we want to get that information also pushed out into our our um, out into our community. Um, there are people who are uh affected economically, who are not necessarily tied to the government shutdown that we're experiencing. People fall in hard times. We want these people to be able to get to the resources that they need. Um, and I want to thank our staff for being um for having uh good practices to our citizens, for having the flexibility, for not just being totally hardened, shutting things off, but being able to work with people. Um. That made me feel very confident that that we've got good staff here working and in their humans, and they understand human things happen. So um that's all that I have for right now.
Thank you.
As I ask more questions, I'm sure that Shannon will say we'll dive in and uh get more answers. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to um, a couple of months ago, I'm not sure exactly which meeting it was, we had a counselor from the city of Yamhill reach out to and speak at public comment here about exploring a potential partnership involving the Yamhill Carlton School District Journalism Class. And um, there's a lot of questions that would be as this evolved of how would this integrate with our current pushouts to the community, how much staff time would need to be involved, but these are all things, you know, we're at the very beginning. Um, Counselor Terrell has expressed interest in serving as liaison with that uh individual. And uh, obviously, her reports, if she be appointed by the council to do this, um, her reports would come back initially with this is how it's evolving and this is what we see. And uh, this is how much staff time it would be. So those would probably be some of the initial questions I'm sure she would work out with the counselor. So that would be up for discussion with the council right now about appointing Counselor Terrell to that liaison position.
Now Patricia and I had um a couple of conversations and we had some conversations also with um
Superintendent.
Superintendent River, yes, thank you. About that, uh, what what Patricia was kind of proposing. And so um, yeah, I I would uh I guess what I would suggest, I don't know the best way to do that as far as getting um counselor, if you're still interested in doing that and getting involved in that, um, if you want to, I can I guess either get the um contact information to you or um you and you could contact um, or you could contact uh the superintendent and um get it that way. So we can talk about it later, I guess, on which which way you want to do it. But I can get you the information, the contact information for Patricia.
Yes, thank you.
If you're still, if you're still interested in doing it or wanting to. Okay.
I'm most definitely interested in doing that. Um, I think it's really important to highlight our children in our community. I think they're the the most interesting thing that's happening in our community, to be honest. Um, so I am definitely interested in that. It would seem that I need the permission from the council or the agreement from the council to be, so that would be the initial first step. And that's what I understood. Again, say the name of the initiative. I missed that.
I'm sorry, I can't. I couldn't hear you, Counselor Ward Mullin.
I'm sorry. Can you say again the name of the initiative? I just missed that when you're
It doesn't really.
Really a specific.
It's not really a specific name. It's when the Yamhill counselor came here, Patricia, is that her name? Patricia came and spoke at public comment and she said she would like to start a partnership with the school district's journalism class.
That's that's the word I didn't hear. Thank you.
Well, I see these um points of consideration on overlap and staff workload and integration with community with city communication framework that are written here on page three eleven of your packet. And I have some concerns that another newsletter going out in our community is going to be kind of redundant. And I certainly don't want our Carlton city staff having to do any typing and copying and editing and things like that. So if I would caution that if we go on and explore this, I would assume the bulk of the work will be on the students because that's what students do.
Um, well, I think first there's gonna be some conversation with uh the people that are involved on how it's gonna look because um, this, the school district already has some outreach that they use with um the parents and the and the students. So they would probably be working off of springing the, you know, kind of springing this off of that. And I think it it might look a little bit different than than just you know, a couple of people putting together a newsletter. Um, there's a little, it's a little larger the larger uh activity, but it also has some uh school staff backup on it. So it wouldn't be, there there would not be that reliance on the council or the council or the staff, our city staff. But I think it's right now it's in uh, as I said, I had a couple of conversations with Patricia and it's in a pretty fluid condition right now. So yes.
Yeah, I think it's in its infancy. I think it's an interesting thing that we need to learn more about. Um, and so I'm happy at this time um, to, you know, with council's approval to appoint Counselor Terrell to um that liaison position, just knowing that, hey, we're gonna need some more information. You know what I mean? Know what it is, what it's gonna do. You know what I mean? And I think we just need to uh, you know, start the process, see what it looks like. Maybe it's something we are like, and that's not really what we thought it would be, or you know what I mean? It would just be interesting to to start the conversations and then get some feedback from you and see what it's like.
I mean, at first, at first blush, I would anticipate the students writing an article. Um, I editing it and it be delivered to staff in finished form to be pushed out on our website. Um, so that's just at first blush and that could change. And I would have to hear what they had in mind. And we would, I would have to coordinate and come back to council with um a framework with a plan, working with staff and with um council to make sure that works out.
It sounded like we just need to give her permission tonight to get this started. See if the snowball grows. If not.
Take it from there.
Yeah, that's correct. And general consensus is fine. We don't need a full motion.
You got my vote.
I for it forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then someone will send me contact information.
Yeah.
Get the email.
I can get that over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Carlton Fire District Board, I do attend those meetings monthly and I keep them updated on our city projects, particularly ones that would impact their travels or response times. And so we we maintain that partnership. Um, so those meetings are going very well. Um, as far as an update on our projects, in the manager's report this month, I did include, I get daily um, reports from our inspector for both our wastewater treatment plant as well as I'm calling it right now, the Grant Street project. Obviously, that's a bigger than just Grant Street. Um, but I did include some of those photos in there. It is hard sometimes to understand everything that's going on because we don't see it every day. It's buried in the ground. So sometimes seeing the photos um are helpful. Um, the wastewater treatment plan is running well on schedule. We may have a few delays with some of the weather that is coming up. The West Grant Street, West Main Street improvements, it is progressing. It has been slow on Grant Street. They have had more unstable soil than we even anticipated. So they've had a number of cavins. Um, they've also found some laterals that were not on any as-built drawings. And so they've had to require some investigative work. Um, so that has been, it's going slow, but it is proceeding. Um, the work workforce sidewalk project, they poured their last panel today, this morning on the north side of the street. So I think that will complete their work for this year, given the rains have certainly announced their presence for the winter. Um, in next spring, we will see what remains out of our benefactors finances. And we will see what we might be able to do on the south side of East Main Street in order to complete some of those. But we'll get some quotes and then come back. We are also anticipating bringing the youth that participated in this project to council likely in December, maybe January to give an update from their perspectives personally. Um, I do apologize, your utility rate um priority, I had old information in my report. Um, in December, I'm going to be bringing forth um an estimate of a comprehensive water and sewer rate structure analysis. This is different than what you had been presented previously. This would actually focus on current rate equity and support council discussion on maintaining revenue neutrality across all customer classes. So it would look into things like should multi-unit uh dwellings be charged a different rate? Could we do a low income program within? But we all know we still have to pay the overarching cost for service. So what would that mean to different rate classes? They would probably raise some to in order to be able to lower others. So I will be bringing that to you to discuss whether or not you want us to budget for that in the next fiscal year, but that'll be coming in December. So I apologize that information was not correct in your packet. And of course, the TSP, you did the final adoption work to sit this evening, thirty days from now, it will be effective. So thank you.
One other thing I forgot about, um, and Counselor Ward Mullin and and Counselor um, we worked on the um the garden, the garden. So just a quick update on the community garden that we worked on uh this winter or this god winter, summer. Um. It was kind of interesting, the I spent a lot of time actually delivering vegetables to people, which was really kind of fun to be able to do. And also, uh, we set up um the, and thank you to city staff for that. They set up a a little um area in the in the um entry there for folks to come and pick up vegetables if they needed or wanted them. Uh, we had that going. Um, the four of us have had a couple of discussions about where it goes from here. And I think we're still kind of talking about some of that a little bit as far as whether we want to try to do the community guard again or go to a um Yes, Carolyn, you tell me.
Pollinator type garden, something like that. And also I want to mention Robin Gek is the fourth member of the.
Yes.
We're leaning in the direction of pollinator garden and not of a produce garden. That was my takeaway from the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. So and Robin, thank you, Robin. Um, Robin Gek also was involved in that. Uh, anybody who is interested in being involved in that product project is is certainly welcome to um join. It's, there's no uh no membership required.
It's not a secret.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that also reminds me, I have reconnected with Hampton Lumber just in the last twenty-four hours. And so um, we are looking at scheduling a meeting in December. Um, to their your pollinator efforts would certainly support their bees and trees efforts. We're thinking about seeing how we can strengthen our partnership with them. Um, do maybe more educational opportunities and partnerships on some of our green spaces and greenways.
For those of you who um are wondering, the the support for this garden this summer came from Hampton. They basically provided the seeds, they provided the soil, they pretty much did everything except.
Built the boxes, didn't they?
Built the boxes. So they pretty much did everything except um grow the plants. So it's nice to hear that they're coming back in. And Hampton, for many of you, if you aren't aware, is um a property owner in Carlton at this point. So they are, yes.
Who's your ally? Who do you contact with them? Just out of curiosity.
Who do we contact with Hampton?
Because I used to work for him.
Ah.
Um, right now I'm working with Lindsay Davis. Lindsay Davis.
They have been very generous and and provided, I think, soil. They, yeah, the soil. They did a great thing for us. Anyway, okay. Sorry. Yes, ma'am.
I noticed in our accounts payable, we've been paying for tree service. Is that part of that um exploring Emerald Ash Bore invasion? Are we checking our ash for Emerald Ash Wars?
We are monitoring that situation very closely. And in fact, we have um the afternoon of December second, we have personnel from ODF coming out and we're gonna walk our green spaces. And we have a specialist in Emerald Ash Bore actually coming. And that is one of the topics that they will be addressing at the work session in December.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, we could probably move to the last item on the agenda.
Okay, oh, council goal setting again?
Council goal setting is that time of the year.
Oh, my gosh.
Um, again, um, actually, I booked Jensen Strategies as they were leaving out the door after our last council goal setting. It just seemed deficient. Um, and I had them reserve the last two Saturdays in January. That is the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first. I've again, wanted to give you time to consult your calendars. Does anybody have any conflicts with either of those two dates?
Shannon, can I, um, get back to you on that? When I check, I have, um. Obligations through Friends of Trees to do pruning in community gar- in community areas in Portland, and I don't think those dates are there, but can I get back to you on that? I'll, I can email you even tonight. I'll look at that calendar. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any conflicts?
No conflicts, just a preference, but no conflict.
What's your preference?
Thirty-first. But, you know, I'm flexible, but that's a preference.
All right, then I will wait for you, Counselor Terrell, to see if you have any conflicts, and then we'll go from there. You're welcome. And as a result, you may be hearing from Jensen Strategies to schedule your individual one-on-one sessions with them, interview sessions with them. You'll remember those are, um, context of questions, um, to get your opinion about how things are going. So those may start in the month of December and November.
Or anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.